Good morning and welcome to the Mason County Board of Commissioners February 2nd regular meeting. Thank you for joining us. Jerry Apple, would you please lead us to the podium?
Sure. It's Mike Pritchard.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of our religious hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who don't know him, Jerry Apple is a longtime advocate for students against destructive decisions.
Yes.
And he does great work at the Shell School.
Thank you.
And my children, we have a huge, we're all great teachers.
Thanks, yes, still teaching.
Um, roll call, please.
Ms. Mr. District 1, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Ms. Mr. District 2, Teri Sheldon.
I'm also here.
Ms. Mr. District 3, Teri DeBree.
Here.
Correspondence in the Divisional Business.
Uh, Hood Canal Group of Clubs sent a letter of support for Jeff Nunnamaker's appointment to the Parks and Trails Advisory Committee. The USDA sent a letter of response regarding the emergency watershed protection program. William Kaiser applied for the Lewiston, Mason, Thurston area agency on aging council. And the Port of Greatview sent a response letter regarding voting safety.
Thank you. Um, I need to ask the Commissioners' indulgence. The Port of Greatview Chair, the Port of Commissioners, um, showed up here yesterday wanting to read into the record their letter, um, and I told them that wasn't the correct meeting to do that. But it'd be okay if I read into the record their letter?
Sure.
This is dated February 1st. Dear Mason County Commissioners, the Port of Greatview is in receipt of your letter dated December 22, 2015, wherein you respond to our earlier correspondence to you requesting attention to voting safety on fresh and saltwater inner area of responsibility. In your missive, you reveal that you have funded for 2016 an additional deputy that will be shared by the schools during the school year and water safety during the summer months. We must confess that your approach to sharing that deputy is unique, and you are to be congratulated for your conscientious spending of tax care money. The Port of Greatview, on behalf of our constituents, offer you our thanks. We look forward to collaborating with the Sheriff on his plans for voting safety on the waters within the Port of Greatview. Board of Commissioners, Glenn Carlson, District 2, Sheriff. Thank you. Is there any other correspondence to come to?
None.
Thank you. This is item number five. This is our open forum citizen input. Now, for Terry Lee for citizens to address the Commission on any items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to, um, come to the podium and address the community and the Commission on any items not on the agenda, please raise your hand. Ms. Rappel, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record and if you'd like where you live, that would be helpful.
All right. My name is Gerald Apple. I used to live in Shelton, and, uh, my heart's still at Shelton. And, uh, I teach traffic safety at Shelton High School. I coordinate all the dry red programs for the Educational Services District. I have about thirty-two schools that I work with in five counties. Um, but anyway, uh, thank you for letting me be here and to talk to all of you. I would like to invite the county commissioners and all of you to a special event that's going to be held on February the twentieth at the High School Sub. It's going to start at 5:30 and end about eight o'clock. Uh, we're going to have a silent auction. We have a lot of great items. Uh, we're going to have a spaghetti feed, uh, and we're going to have entertainment. We have two groups. We have a group from the Shelton High School Band that's going to play, a quartet group, uh, saxophone. And, uh, we also have a ukulele group that's going to play rock and roll. Also, we're going to have things there for young people. Uh, for, we have a balloon maker that's going to come, and, uh, and my sad club, uh, president is going to be the emcee, and we have invited students from the last thirty years that have been in sad club, uh, to come to this, and we're going to have a lot of former students there. It's going to be great to see them, great to see their parents. Uh, but I wanted to invite you to come to that night. It's going to be a really special event, um, and I'm trying to promote it, uh, in as many ways as possible. We're hoping for a couple hundred people there. Uh, it's a ten-dollar donation, but I think you're going to really enjoy it, and, uh, I just, and the money is going to go for a good cause. It's going for Relay for Life. And, uh, that's a special event in my heart, and I hope all of you can make it to that in June, I think June 24th and 25th, and I know that, uh, there's just a lot of neat things out there. I'm still teaching traffic safety. This is my forty-sixth year of teaching, uh, driver's ed, hope to make it to fifty years. Uh, and I know that I appreciate the, uh, county commissioners in supporting us, uh, with our media awareness grant. We got a chance to go out to the Squawson Island Tribal Dinner and speak at that. Ms. Washington came last week and did a training. She was wonderful. Uh, and, uh, we're going out to Southside next week. Uh, we're going to be speaking to the health classes, uh, to the middle school, and we're going to get the word out, uh, on media awareness and what, you know, alcohol and tobacco and marijuana advertisement, and so that people can look at those ads in a, uh, a better way, uh, and those ads are targeted towards you. I've taken too much time probably, but I just want to invite all of you to that. Ten-dollar donation, uh, it's going to be great food, great entertainment, and we're going to talk about some of our different programs. Thank you for your support.
My children, you have an interesting program, and he does, um, kind of an online webinar-type driver's ed, and it's interesting because you're teaching driver's ed with my children same time as their cousins across the state. We're getting that from you.
Yeah, we start a class in March, uh, March 1st, uh, and I have seven different schools on, Choab, Redrisfield, Sprague, Alaska, PL. It's really neat to see about a hundred students. I've got seven different cameras that I'm looking at, and I have really good classroom monitors. Some of them are principals or superintendents of those small schools that are helping. So, anyway, thank you for your support.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the commission? Cool. Please state your name and where you live.
My name is Abby, and I'm from Girl Scout troop 42331. This is the time of year for Girl Scout cookies. Selling cookies helps Girl Scouts develop tools like merchandising, marketing, budgeting, accounting, order filling, and customer service. For every box, four dollars this year. Ninety cents goes to the troop, a dollar and four cents go to the neighborhood service unit, and two dollars and thirty-seven cents go to our regional service center in Dupont. The rest of the money goes to the bakers of cookies. You can preorder today, they will come in late February, or wait until booth sales start early March. But be warned, booths may run out of your favorite cookies. Pre-ordering is the only way to get, to guarantee you will get your favorite type. If you don't like cookies, we also have Operation Cookie Drop, which delivers Girl Scout cookies to service men and women overseas. Remember, they're better when you share.
Awesome. Future in marketing. Is there anybody else I'd like to present to the commission today?
Well, will you stay around after the meeting? I would like to buy some of the Senate service from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Takes us to, I, I have number six, the adoption of the agenda.
I'm sure the board of county commissioners adopt the agenda as presented today.
On second?
Who is the second to adopt the agenda? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Washington Terry. There are no minutes, so we'll move on to the action agenda. The items on the action agenda are intended to be voted on one vote, approved on one vote, but however, you have the opportunity to ask any questions on the items on the agenda, or alternatively, you can ask that any items be polled for a separate vote. So first of all, we will read through them, and then if you have any questions, please raise your hand if we recognize. Uh, Commissioner Netherland, would you please read items 8.1 and 8.2? Commissioner Sheldon, 8.3 through 8.5, and I will read 8.6, 8.6 through 8.7.
Yes, Madam Chair, item number 8.1, approval of consolidated contract C-17118. Amendment 6, adding statement of work for natural estuaries program onsite sewage management round six. Office of Immunization and Child Profile and Immunization Information Systems. There are no budgetary effects for the 2016. An additional hundred thousand will be budgeted in 2017. Item number 8.2, approval of the ordinance amending county code chapter 2.88, alternate locations for regular commission meetings and allowing joint meetings between county legislative authorities.
Now, page 8.3 is approval of the Veterans Assistance Fund applications for necessity items $300, utilities $862.87, $7770, for a total of $1,932.87, as recommended by the Veterans Service Office. 8.4, approval of the resolution to approve county road projects, CRPs, 2006 through 2008. The three road projects are as follows. Tools, 2006, Bear Creek-Dewano Road Clear Zone Project, 2007, Bear Creek-Dewano Road Guard Rail Project, and 2008, Arcadia Road Guard Rail Project. The Federal Highway Administration will contribute ninety percent of the cost for each project with a ten percent match from the county. And 8.5, approval of the board chief Nunnamaker and Brad Bryant to the Parks and Trails Advisory Board for a four-year term ending on December 31, 2019.
Thank you. Item 8.6, approval warrants 2016. Claims clearing fund warrants 803539 through 8035394, $6,623.55. Our claims clearing fund warrants 8035486 through 8035506, $115,314.46. Claims clearing fund warrants 8035840 through 8035877, for $72,706.13. Our direct deposit fund warrants 28209 through 28582, total amount $589,772.25. And our salary clearing fund warrant 7001596 through 7001635, total amount $873,997.90, for a total of $1,658,344.28. Our year-to-date total for claims clearing is $196,645.14. Our direct deposit year-to-date total, $589,772.25. And our salary clearing year-to-date total is brand-new year of $873,997.90. Finally, 8.7, approval of the contract amendment for Mental Health Professionals LLC for February 1 through December 31, 2016, for intensive case management services for veterans suffering from mental illness and/or chemical dependency. The total 2016 contract is for $95,674, shall add 2016 reporting requirements and a client satisfaction survey. Is there anybody that has any questions on any of the items just read?
This is Madam Chair, um, 8.2, and I apologize for this question, but I, I read that, that bill, that legislation, three times, and nowhere explicitly did it say that the county legislative authorities needed to be in the same county. Uh, I assume that's correct, so the legislative authorities within the county would meet and collaborate, but that would not include other counties. For instance, if you had a, uh, an issue that was relevant to two different counties, those legislative authorities wouldn't meet outside the county. Is that correct?
You...
I don't, I don't recall the, the detail of that.
I, I don't think that is correct. I know they battled over it, I'll double-check it, but, uh, they actually brought this forward because there's two counties that are tiny, uh, down at the bottom of Washington by Vancouver, well, kind of land where they sometimes do overlap and they do meet, but it's not intended for us to do that, but I, that was part of the discussion when they were creating it because they overlap.
It would be a little, a little concerning if, if our county commissioners could go to another county and meet with their county commissioners outside the county. I understand doing business outside the county seat, but outside the county would raise a little bit of a flag.
I think it's possible. I, I'll give you an example. Say you have, uh, in 35th Legislative District, you have three counties, and if there's an appointment to be made to a open seat, for example, all three county commissioners will meet in a county to, to make a selection, so they can meet, I'm sure, there's some provision to meet together or specific, but I don't know that they could have a regular meeting.
Our, um, administrative manager, Diane Zorn, has been following this very closely. There are examples also where we have regional, um, operations such as our new Mason, Mason-Thurston bigger hub organization, and others where we jointly manage, uh, regional programs, and so it does necessitate sometimes getting together as two boards of commissioners, and, um, and that would be a situation where you would potentially meet outside of the county just because you have a regional issue to deal with. And, um, Diane, like I said, Diane has been following this very closely and how it should be implemented, municipal research service corporation helps counties and local governments implement legislative changes, and, um, I, I would defer her and, and her research on this, but I feel you'd like to pull this off and refer her.
If it were a, uh, if it were a special meeting, I understand that, but they also, uh, said regular scheduled meetings, and that's the, that was the area of my concern, not the special meetings.
I think that, as I recall the bill, you know, the past three hundred bills a session, probably, uh, I think the bill dealt almost exclusively with a county that wanted to meet outside the county seat and within the county, but I don't remember provisions about, uh, joint meetings.
Commissioners, do you have any, um, any desire, is there, is there a necessity to researches for the regarding? Because we do have legislation in part change that would say, "Any two or more county legislative authorities may hold a joint regular session meeting solely in the county seat of a participating county if the agenda item or items relate to actions or considerations of mutual interest for the service."
And that's what happened there, they're just taking in the RCW. It was the RCW that created this. As I said, there was a long discussion, uh, at, you know, the Legislative Committee for WASC about this and the idea that there's a couple of counties that literally, their, their meeting place is in the other county because it's so small. Uh, that's how it came about, so I don't think we can change the legislation.
No.
But it, and it definitely is, is possible now in the state.
Diane, your seat, Thomas Terry.
I only heard a little bit, so I'm...
She's back there, she's, she's radar riding again.
I was watching, I was listening.
Briefly, can the, can the, can the county, can this county hold a regular scheduled meeting outside the county?
With another legislative authority.
That's correct.
Yeah, there, yes. There was two bills. One was to allow commissioners to hold a regular commission meeting within the county but out of the county seat, and another bill was because it was not clear whether two counties could get together, and in fact, there was an attorney general opinion in 2014 that said, "If you meet with another legislative authority, you have to stay in your county seat," so we would have to do it via Skype or telephone. And so to correct basically that because they wanted you to be able to actually go if you wanted to get together, if you had mutual interest, there was a separate bill that said, "Yes, if you have a common interest, we could actually go there, they can come here."
So it was two of the bills then?
Yes, and I just combined it so that way you can have the latitude to do any.
Oh, is there a thirty-day, uh, notice for the regular scheduled meeting that that's going to be moved out of the county?
If, with another legislative authority?
Correct.
No, that one, I think it was the, you use the special meeting rules, which is a twenty-four-hour notice on the website, posted on your regular place, and then at the place you're going to be. So it did have different notification requirements.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I'd like to pull it off for the, for a comment then.
Any other questions on any items on the action agenda? Commissioners, do you have any questions? If either of you like any items polled for separate vote, we are pulling items out of your request.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the action item agendas, uh, 8.1 through 8.7, removing 8.2 for a separate vote.
I was, I was going to suggest 8.7 we polled for a separate vote. Oh, sorry, I didn't.
I'm sorry.
I'm going through that process.
Oh, okay, then, I, since it wasn't stated, I'll make a new motion. Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the action agenda items, 8.1, 8.3, 8.4, 8.5, and 8.6. Removing 8.7 and 8.2 for a separate vote.
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
Move, second to approve items 8.1, 8.2, 8.4, 8.5, and 8.6 on today's action agenda agenda. Is there any discussion? Just wanted to share that. Um, item 8.1 is, um, additional monies as a result of, to our water quality program as a result of some downgrading of some shellfish areas. We are extremely fortunate to have the National Estuary Program basically fund our water quality programs, and, um, once again, we pull the rabbit out of our hat and give it take and care for one more year 2017. Thank you. Okay, so, um, there's no more discussion? All in favor, please go aye.
Aye.
Aye, Washington Terry. Takes us to item 8.2, approval of the ordinance amending county code chapter 2.88, alternate locations for regular commission meetings and allowing joint meetings between county legislative authorities. As we heard, um, from the answer on the question, there were two pieces of legislation that created these allowances, and those, um, are being codified here in this, uh, in this action agenda item, so that just, we have this also in our, in our code, in line with the due processes. Um, is there any other notification that needs to be made? When done, is there any testimony?
Thank you, and good morning, Commissioners. Tom Davis, 170 West, of Coursey Road. This is not why I was here. Uh, I thought I, I actually thought it was a foolish question, but I thought I'd air it. Um, since what, my understanding is correct, since we can have, according to this RCW, a regularly scheduled, uh, county meeting held not out, not only outside the county seat but outside the county without any thirty-day prior notice, uh, that is a bit concerning to me. Um, I, I hate to see local issues travel. Um, it's, it's hard enough to get the participation that we need to get participation to enjoy our democratic privileges within the county, uh, without having now to travel outside the county, even if this is not the intention of this board. Uh, when you codify this, then it is written in stone, and someone's going to pull this out of the hat, uh, at a future date. Uh, as I understand, we can't really modify the, uh, the RCW, but, and I might be wrong in this, I thought we could make it a little bit more concise, maybe even restrictive, in that it is not the intention of this board to move a regularly scheduled meeting outside of this county without a thirty-day prior notice. Uh, if the issue is of the magnitude that it needs to be moved outside the county, then I would think that we'd all know about that going to happen, uh, far in advance, far enough in advance. If, if the public is going to have to, uh, travel outside the county to give testimony, then I think it's just prudent for us to have as much advance notice as possible. Uh, that would be my suggestion and my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody else with that testimony, item 8.2. There you go, I will close the public testimony period. Commissioners, deliberation?
Well, I'll, I'll just start here, Madam Chair. I guess that, I think this would be a slightly abused provision, but I think that, I don't recall the bill, I recall the, uh, the first part that Diane described, and I don't really recall the second bill, I'm sorry about that, but the, uh, I think the opportunity would be seldom used to meet in, uh, outside the county as a special meeting with another county commission, but there may be an emergency, a natural resource issue that might necessitate it. I think it would be seldom used, and we could, uh, you know, I hate to, to take away the discretion that, uh, this commission or a subsequent commission could use. I don't think it would be abused. Uh, I think there was, in the first bill, there was provisions, Diane corrected, but wrong, that how many meetings should we have outside, or outside the county seat?
You're limited to once a quarter, yes.
Once by every quarter, yeah. So, it probably was, I can't say this for sure, it was well divided, but it did pass, obviously.
Ms. Netherland, do you have any comments or discussion?
You know, I understand the wording, I definitely can, uh, but it is the way that the RCW was set up, and one of the reasons why, from the discussions that I had understood, is, again, as we just mentioned, sometimes it's a mercy, but sometimes, um, it is just actions that come up right away, and given a thirty-day notice doesn't make sense to me at that point for some of it. It has to be, the whole purpose behind it, though, is there has to be, uh, held in one of the, the county seats. It can't be held, otherwise, we can't hold it in welfare for both of them, so there's a safety precaution that occurs automatically with the idea that it will be in, you know, uh, let's say, uh, Port Orchard if it's Kitsap County, right in their county seat with their video or be here in ours. It just allows us to be able to move, allows them to be able to come here as well. It doesn't mean that we necessarily have to go see them. Um, and, but it has to be for, for as they hold a regular special meeting solely in the county seat of a participating county if the agenda item or items relates to actions or, or considerations of mutual interest. Uh, again, to me, that seems simple enough to where I think we leave leniency to those that are involved. They're not going to be able to conduct a, a tax increase or something like that on anybody going out there. That's not of mutual interest, so, Mike.
So, Abby, it's unfortunate that we don't know the legislative intent for, um, having a regular meeting has special meaning, notice requirements, like, that doesn't make tremendous sense to me, but at some level, at some point, this was debated. Um, it's very unfortunate that sometimes you don't get legislative intent on, like, on bills delivered with it. Do you recall if there was any, any dis...
No, I, I do remember the intent, but that doesn't, the sad part is, in reality, it doesn't mean anything by the time it gets done. There's so many people that touch it, the intent when it first started was to have those certain counties be able to meet because they have so much community. That's when it started, at least, uh, the first time I heard about it, but it's morphed a lot since then.
Yes, I just know that it was when I was, um, when it first happened, it was in response to, because there had been the attorney general opinion saying you can't move to the other county, you know, you can jointly meet, but it has to be via, you know, like I said, Skype or whatnot, so I think it was, in their mind, what I understood was just kind of a cleanup to allow it, and you can actually physically go there, they can come here.
I understand that, but just to say a joint regular meeting, with only a special meeting...
That was odd, yes. Because I had to read it again, because I thought, well, it's either regular, special, and you follow one or the other, which either way, regular and special have the same twenty-four-hour notice on the website, so it's not a lot different there.
Um, what would be the, is your motion?
I think the reason for the special is, is it specifies that only what's on the agenda can be discussed and handled. I think that's the reason why it was used that specific way, uh, where in general, you can actually add stuff to the agenda and make some changes.
But it does say joint regular meeting. Regular meetings, not special meetings.
No, but if you use a special qualification for, yeah. Aye.
Is there a motion or what would the commission like to do with this agenda?
Madam Chair, move for the approval of ordinance amending, uh, county code chapter 2.88, alternate locations for regular commission meetings and allowing joint meetings between county legislative authorities.
Well, I don't know that I'd second the motion, maybe, I'll, I'll just not second that, I have another idea.
I will second as well, because I only have the...
If we, if we, uh, table this for a, a week or two weeks and got the bill actually ready, could we call into the bill and maybe do a little more research on it, make sure we're, it's not something we have to do today, and make sure that we're, that we're proceeding with all the information. I would make that a motion, a motion to table this for two weeks and, and gather more information. I'll second what we're making the decision.
Segue to, um, table this motion continuum until February 15th, for a meeting of the commission. Is there any further discussion? There you go, I'll call for the vote, all in.
And maybe we can find some legislative data about, about the, the language there, so.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Washington Terry. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Takes us to item 8.7, approval of the contract amendment for Mental Health Professionals LLC for February 1st, December 31st, 2016, for intensive case management services for veterans suffering from mental illness and/or chemical dependency. from mental illness and/or chemical dependency. The total 2016 contract is for $95,674, shall add 2016 reporting requirements and a client satisfaction survey. I see we have our public health director here. Would you like to present this item?
Commissioner Vicky Kirkpatrick, Director of Mason County Public Health and Human Services. And Mental Health Professionals has been the contractor for our intensive case management services for veterans since they were the only respondent to our request for proposal for such services to, to our veteran population. And the request is to, is to amend the contract to include an extension through the end of 2016 with a new RFP process that would begin mid-year, assuming that the, the mental health tax would be continued beyond 2016. But this particular amendment would be an extension through the end of 2016. It also would be an increased dollar amount to respond to increased caseload, to be able to sustain that caseload through 2016. It adds additional reporting requirements for 2016 and adds the deliverable of a client satisfaction survey.
Any questions, Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
I have one question. I think you raised this yesterday, I'm not sure. For the increase, is it the amount of dollars proportional to the old contract for new clients? In other words, we're adding a certain amount, I think it's $30,000 here. Is that, how many more clients will we serve?
The original contract that was, that was approved by the commissioners in response to the RFP was for $100,000 to support 45, a caseload of 45 clients. In 2015, that contract was reduced to 60,000 with an amendment adding an additional 5,000, and the $60,000 contract was for, to support a client caseload of 30. At the end of 2000, or during the course of 2015, the actual client caseload was 63. So the request was for increased funding to maintain a client caseload of, of 63 clients, which in fact would bring the, is, is slightly less than the original contract that we had with them in 2014 for 45 clients.
Okay, so we'll have a $95,000 for 63 clients?
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you. This will open for public testimony. Anybody would like to testify on this?
Thank you, Commissioners Tom Davis again. Hopefully I haven't used up all my goodwill for the day. This is the reason I came here, and I, I hope I had the sense that this was going to be approved. And the reason I asked for a separate vote on this is because I didn't want it to be approved reluctantly. I wanted it to be approved enthusiastically. My objective here, and this is a component of my objective, is to, is to reduce recidivism among the veteran population in the criminal justice system and in the jail population. This, this collaboration, which constitutes basically a public-private collaboration, does that, and it's done, done that marvelously, effectively. I would think that, I would think that the, the collaboration between the public and the private sector is the direction that this commission has wanted to go. We don't have the resources, and I'm not sure we, we have the, the people power to, to administer these services, so we need to contract outside. The fact that this particular entity is specific to veterans' population makes their expertise invaluable, because in my, my feeling, the veteran population needs a whole different addressing system than the regular population in order to be effective, and we have been effective. This is not a budget item. This is, this is coming out of the 1/10th, the 1% sales tax increase, so it's not a budget item in, in the respect that it's coming out of current expense. And it is exactly what those monies were designed to do. So it fills that criteria. With regard to performance, it's a collaborative effort again. So we're having, I can't do, for instance, I can't be effective in the voluntary capacity that I function in for my veteran mentor program without the additional assistance of someone who's going to do the treatment and do the casework, the casework duties. It's simply beyond my ability to do that. So what I'd like to, what I'd like to do is just, just quickly, very quickly and very generally, just say that my function, as, as I designed it to do, is to advocate for the veteran in court, to try to establish and create relationships with the judges so that the veteran is not looked at as a, as a, just another offender, but that their offense is tied to their military service and therefore needs special attention. And then, to some degree, we've been very successful having that relationship with the judges when they know that they're not going to give them a lenient sentence, so they go back out and re-offend, that we wrap, we wrap them up. They come, we walk in, they do not sit in that court by themselves. I am with every single veteran that I'm aware of, if they're a veteran, who's charged with an offense, and they walk out with me and, and they're involved in the program to the extent that's necessary. And by that, I mean, some of them need to, to have mentors for a lengthy period of time. In this case, mostly sheriff's deputies, but we've kind of expanded outside that realm too. And some of them don't, and some of them aren't willing to have mentors. So, so this becomes a, in order to be effective, you have to kind of specialize on each person's role, and there's three components to, to solving this recidivism problem. And one of them is, is the legal component, which I advocate for, and I think we've made great strides in. The other, obviously, is the treatment programs and the caseworking programs. In that respect, it is intensely, intense treatment or intense casework management, which Leon does, which he definitely needs help with, because we're successful, so we're growing. And the third is the housing program, and, and which, as you know, I'm working on now. Those are the three components if we're going to attack this thing and actually change the way, or change those numbers. If we take out one of those components, we're not going to be effective. I am delighted, obviously, to work with someone at Mental Health Professionals LLC who has the experience and the passion, and you can't take passion out of this issue or you have nothing. So they have the passion, and they have the expertise, and they have the credentials and the motivation to go ahead and, and collaborate with me. If we had a very, very large health organization, I could not have that kind of relationship with them. So I, I think it meets all the criteria. I think it meets the, the efficacy. We're meeting our objectives. We, we, we have that performance measure. I think it's all potatoes in terms of money, $30,000. If I picked up the Lewis County Chronicle, I think it's called, the other day, January 26th, the Sheriff's Department, they had a big article in there saying, look, we're going to get a lot of income, a lot of revenue from Mason County, $440,000 we're expecting in 2016 for the outsourcing of Mason County prisoners, and they're all happy about it. I'm not happy about that at all. I'm unhappy because of the necessity of that, and this program speaks directly to that. With the 28 people that we have now in the, in the mentor program who have not re-offended, when I read the article, it says, we're expecting 28 to 30 people a month, and that at $60 and some odd cents a day, and that's going to be $440,000 our county is going to receive from Mason County for those services. Not the direction I'm looking to go in. That's not to say it's not necessary. That's to say that something has to be done, and these three components, the way we're addressing this, this problem is effective, sole effective. Other counties, Kitsap County, Aklealem County, Thurston County, I want to know what's going on here? How can, you know, how, how are you doing this? How does it work? Well, we're working because we're doing, we're, we're addressing these issues, and we're addressing the people on an individual basis. We're not, we're not all just, as I said, we're not making sausage here, we're not putting them all through the same program for 15 months and so on. We, we just address the needs, and we all stay on our own sides, but we work collaboratively, collaboratively, and that is the legal, the treatment, and hopefully the housing component. And I think we're doing pretty doggone well, so I think this is money well spent. Thank you.
Anybody else like to testify on this item? There you go. I'll close the public testimony. Commissioners deliberation?
Well, thank you for weighing in. I enjoy hearing how it's working. Obviously, you feel very strongly about this issue, so I'm glad we're putting more, more dollars towards it.
Okay, well, I, I do want to share. I have been holding back on this for a very simple reason. I was involved in attending the meetings of the advisory committee when we were, they were deciding, I was not a member of the advisory committee, they were deciding how 1/10th, 1% treatment tax should be spent. And determined that intensive case management was lifted away that, that the program would be designed, and we blew up the contracts on that, and that clients would be teamed up with peers who have the same life experiences and cultural contacts to relate to the individuals who are being assigned by the case management, and those were to be volunteers. And this contract extension then moved that, in my opinion, I was trying to figure out what was different about the contract, we could talk about caseload, but the significant piece was that we moved it now to a paid mentor. And that was a change in what was decided, and we hadn't had that discussion, and so I was trying to get my arms around that whole thing. Why, why the change? Where was that discussed and had that, that recommendation come in from either a director or the now-defunded advisory board? I'm not saying that's not a good thing to do, I just, I thought it needed editing because it was a change. And I got some information in my, asked for initial information, which helped a lot, that these paid counselors, you can say that it's difficult to find volunteers or whatever, but the justification says that these clinical peer support counselors from volunteer veterans' mentors is that they are professionally trained, what distinguishes, you know, from the volunteers, that they're professionally trained and clinically supervised. They're an active part of the clinical team that can assist them with the setting boundaries as well as expected ethical and operational competencies and standards of practice for working within clinical boundaries. So, you know, there's a justification, and I can acknowledge that. I just wanted this to have a full vetting. It wasn't because I don't agree, I just wanted this to have a full vetting, because this was definitely changing what the initial recommendation was. I will support it, and I thank Mental Health Professionals for your work. I do. You do great work. Thank you, Tom, for your advocacy. I'd be happy to.
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the contract amendment with Mental Health Professionals LLC from February 1st through December 31st, 2016 for intensive case management services for veterans suffering from mental illness and chemical dependency. The total 2016 contract is for $95,674 and shall add 2016 reporting requirements for a client satisfaction survey.
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. It moves second to approve the contract amendment with Mental Health Professionals LLC from February 1st through December 31st, 2016 for intensive case management services for veterans suffering from mental illness and/or chemical dependency. The total 2016 contract is for $95,674 and shall add 2016 reporting requirements and client satisfaction survey. Any further discussion? There you go. Call for the vote. All fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. We have no public appearance at this time, so it takes us to item number 10, other business is reported by department heads and elected officials. We have no elected officials, we do have department heads, elected officials, the commission. Any other departments? In that case, it's item number 11, or in force of powers, reporting what we've been doing, how we've been representing the county on our various boards, where we have met or will meet together. Commissioner Sheldon?
Sure. I'll go first, and I'll be brief. I was able to attend the last county commission meeting by fall, when I was in Olympia, that was on the 26th. We got briefings before that. During that week, the 27th, we had a reception in Olympia for the, the shellfish growers put on, and Zim was obviously there with her expertise in the liquid food, but it was probably one of the best-attended receptions. I don't go to too many of them, but it was probably one of the bests attended all year. I think it's because of, obviously because of the food, but I think, I think part of that, that, of course, is the growers, the growers that we have. And Mason County is really the heart of the shellfish-growing area in South Peaches Sound and, and all of Washington, obviously. So it was really a nice event, and they've got a pretty good agenda this year, that people are buying in on, on the general issues of water quality and jobs and strengthening their industry. See, a couple other times, I was, most time I was in Olympia this last week, I was able to attend part of our briefings yesterday and meeting, obviously, today. Upcoming events, we have our cutoff for policy bills coming up today at 5:00, so, or not today, excuse me, Friday at 5:00, so I'll be busy at Olympia, then hopefully back here on, on next Tuesday night.
Thank you.
Okay. See, I had a meeting prior to last week's commission meeting with the regional support network regarding our criminal justice treatment account, that is, these are monies we use to support our direct court. And the credit prescription of how you can use them, and it's based on a plan, and we're having, because of the expansion of Medicaid, that money is not being spent all the way through across the state, so we had a discussion with superior court judges about how to maybe alter that program, make sure to spend down so that the legislature doesn't point the account out. Because what frequently happens when there's superior money, and there's a good chance that they will try to include nutritional services and counseling, nutrition, because it goes part and parcel with your alcohol recovery efforts. I've had a board health meeting and then our commission meeting in the evening. I've had a meeting at the memorial hall committee. I met with Judge Hindley regarding some of the things happening in the superior court, especially around juvenile court, and changes around juvenile court, and a, we're going to be establishing a truce in court, and thank goodness, it's been something I've been working towards myself since taking office, as opposed to having the truce have to go to court and have a public court process. The truce board provides earlier intervention and more creative options. I met with the director of community action council on a request that will be sent forward to the commission probably next week or the week after. There was a public meeting on the efforts for developing a community recreation center here in the south end of the county potentially, and there was a poll done regarding public support, floor fees and price points, maybe, would it, would it pay membership fees for it? And just interestingly enough, and this will probably come before the commission at some point, some level, their poll did indicate a public support for, well, public and private grants community centers. So I anticipate we'll be requesting for a valid initiative or something to support such a endeavor.
Is it a, a valid initiative for parks?
There was no-
Correct, or how, how would that work?
Yeah, there was absolutely no distinction in the poll, and there's not been a request. I can think of a million different ideas. There's many different options available to us, public facility district, expansion of metropolitan park district, et cetera. What will continually be an issue is the fact that the city's shellfish builders, who probably would benefit the most from this, depending on location of the, of the facility, are pretty much tapped out on their, on their levy authority. So if there was to be a levy, a 40-pound, if it's of some kind, or bond, it would need a levy.
Was there a telephone?
It was a professional gun telephone, yes. I think they also did use cell phones. It was a professional gun telephone home, yes, I think they also did use cell phones. Yeah, it was, and it was paid private, with private funding. There was a meeting of Mason Matters, attended the Early Learning Coalition public meeting, or luncheon to talk about their work. It was keynote speaker was Ross Hunter, who's now leading the program. And I'm hired as a staffer, as a decision maker. I also toured the cannabis growing operation of the port, just to see what their closed loop system or air, how that works, because that is potentially a technology that would help prevent the odors that potentially the probably people have, or at least. I listened in on the legislative conference call, I attended for the Washington Association of Counties, I spoke at the Mason Transit Authority annual meeting, and I, we had a commission briefing yesterday, last night, I attended those Sierra Pacific air quality permit hearing, and there is a conditional, there was recommendation for additional approval of the permit, it's special requirements, I'm rushing down emissions, I apologize, I think I missed a card. But the, the particular matter emissions are, keep, keep the county air quality within the national standards.
A question for you, if you might, if you might, so they're going to use an existing boiler system?
Correct.
But the existing boiler is state-of-the-art, as I understand it, so it doesn't need to be modified for, for the new bill?
So, and the emissions would probably come for, it's an easy issue.
Okay.
And, and when a local town products does cease operations, there'll be a further deduction in conditions in the air, but that was not accounted for, due to the review of conditions. Let's see, we have a finance committee meeting after this, after this, and then we have a special meeting with the Mason Transit Authority. We have a meeting, I have a meeting with the Director of the Choice Regional Health Network, which we are a member, just to get more information about how they operate, as well as the Cascade of Social Alliance, which is a very complicated alliance around implementation of the Affordable Care Act and, and the state's efforts around healthcare. See, I might be attending the legislative roundtable after the meeting, on Wednesday 3rd, so maybe in the same meeting, and then I will be going to celebrate my father's 86th birthday, back here for commission meeting and briefings on Monday.
Okay, Mason School District, talked about the grants for the, for the ballfields, mental credit construction in regards to possibly recycled Mason, put some other things on, trying to expand their land here, bring in more jobs up in Mason, Chamber Luncheon, the lines of Healthy South Sound. I went down to Olympia, so I did not attend the early childhood thing, at your request to go down there on that issue in regards to wealth management change. LLC conference call, courthouse security, annual Mason Transit meeting set in Washington Boys, get some awards and stuff, it was wonderful. Then we had another transit meeting later on, where we celebrated the Best Transit, World Transits Center, and briefings, and then the left board. Afterwards, we have the Finance Committee, I have, let's see, we have a, another MTA meeting tonight, Tahuya has asked me to come and speak to some, their Water Board and their Community Association Board, stuff on how to run the meetings. Legislative Roundtable, lines of the Healthy South Sound Executive Director, meeting with me. EDC Regulatory Subcommittee Meeting, Chamber Breakfast, Legislative Steering Committee, we'll go down there to Olympia on Thursdays, Women's Rs, briefings, and then the reclassification meeting after our briefings, talk about reclassification. And now comes the sales pitch. We had a young lady stand up here, and we all know the guts that it takes to be able to do that. With that being said, I hope you understand that not only can you help this young lady, but you can reward her for such an action, which is a good thing for all of us. When we let that stuff just go by and not empower them to get stronger and stronger, we end up with leaders that are not as strong and do not accomplish the things they should. It may sound like I'm making something out of nothing on this, but it took a lot of guts to stand there, and it was put to us that we could also help our veterans, or, or, or people serving, I mean, overseas. Imagine how, a smile on their face if they're serving over in the east and they get a box of Cognos or, or the like. But more than that, I'm going to directly ask you right now, to think about this, it costs a couple bucks to empower that young lady a little bit further, a couple of bucks. All you got to do is reach in your pocket, grab a couple bucks, buy one box of cookies, don't have to eat it, send it overseas. And so, literally, yes, this is a sales pitch. We need to empower people to do what she just did, and I ask you now, reach in your pockets, empower her and send a smile to somebody overseas. That's my pitch.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, AB, for being addressing. Does anybody have a favor to come before this commission?
I'm the chair, I'm the chair.
You're the chair. Thank you. Okay. Also, check.